We're going to be starting in about 30 seconds. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. I wonder if you'd stand for pledge allegiance and please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Black. Sorry, Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Fazini.
Here.
Alderman Fruein.
Here.
Alderman Lauer.
Here.
Alderman Sage.
Here.
Alderman Mualamwe.
Here.
Alderman Sterns.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Mayor Renham.
Here. And before we begin, I'd like to call attention to our distinguished state representative, Keith Summer, who's in the audience. Thank you for joining us. Good to see you. Thanks.[262.89][262.89](APPLAUSE). Our first order of business under recognition of appointments is the appointment of Ward Five Alderman. And after taking applications and consulting with the council, I made a recommendation of Ms. Johnny Painter. Is there a motion to approve and to have Ms. Johnny Painter appointed to replace Jennifer McDade in Ward Five?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Alderman Black. Is there a second? Second by Alderman Fazini. Any discussion, questions, concerns? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Oh, excuse me. Oh, that's right. Geez, okay. I am educable, it just takes a very long time. Okay. Okay. Okay, I know it's not showing on display. Karen, what am I doing wrong?
I don't know. That's odd. There you go.
Okay. There are eight ayes and no nays to announce. And so, Ms. Painter, would you come forward? And Madam Clerk, would you please administer the oath of office to Johnny Painter? And I guess her husband's here to take pictures.
Raise your hand and raise your hand for me. I, Johnny Painter, are Johnny Painter, having been appointed, is having been appointed in position of Alderman on your side to the position of Alderman of Ward Five, to follow the pledge, to follow the will that I will support the Constitution of America, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and I will faithfully discharge, and I will faithfully discharge, to duties of Alderman on your side, the duties of Alderman of Ward Five, according to the statute of my rights. With my generation, thank you.[402.81][402.81](APPLAUSE).
And moving right along, we have a consent agenda, item 6A through M. Are there any items that any Alderman or woman would like to see removed from the consent agenda for a separate discussion? Alderman Fruein, excuse me.
None.
Pardon me?
I'll just read my statement.
Okay.
Do you want to?
Do we usually have a motion on the table first?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
That we approve as presented.
Okay, moved by Alderman Fazini. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Fruein. Okay. And, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. With both the consent and regular agenda items, I have not received any financial benefits from any of the individuals or organizations referenced in these items, and I want that to be noted. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll? Oh, that's right. No, no. Okay. We did so much of this during township, I guess I'm just like an old workhorse. Sorry. Okay, there was something wrong. Okay, there we go. Alderman Lauer, we still haven't got you. Did you intend to vote? Okay. Yes, maybe I pressed the button at the wrong time, sorry.
You might have a little left, sir.
No, no, actually, it's my fault. We have nine ayes, no nays to announce. Okay, thank you. And now, clear. All right, now, we move on to our regular agenda, item 7A, Joint Bloomington Normal RFP in Agreement for Solid Waste Disposal Landfill Services. And the recommendation by staff is that the RFP for Solid Waste Disposal Services be awarded to Allied Waste Services Republic, and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the necessary documents. Is there a motion to approve?
Mayor, I need to recuse myself before this happens, please.
Before this even happens. Okay. Thank you.
I will make a motion to approve this as presented.
Moved by Alderwoman Schmidt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Fruein. Discussion. Okay. If there is no discussion, then we'll go ahead and start a vote. Let the record show that there are eight ayes and there are no nays to announce. Okay, if you could have Alderman Fazini come back in. Welcome back. Under item 7B, what a way to baptize a new Alderwoman by fire and brimstone, but then to start the discussion of $180 million budget. Under 7B, we have city manager proposed budget for the 2014-2015 fiscal year, and we've allocated approximately 45 minutes, that's in terms also including our discussion among the council. And I will turn it over to our city manager for an overview and presentation. Thank you.
Mayor Alderman, I had two hours of presentation. Do you think we could go a little later?
Actually, I'll be skinned alive before you will.[677.54][677.54](LAUGHING).
Fine, then, because of that, we'll just give you a lot of homework here. Mayor and council members, I'm pleased to present to you tonight a two-volume annual financial plan. This is for fiscal year 2014, beginning May 1st to April 30th, 2015. Before I make a few introductory comments, and my comments will be followed by a PowerPoint presentation by our finance director, I'd like to make a few comments. First, I think it's important to point out before we get into the message that we thank Patty Lynn Silva, our finance director, and Carla Marillo. Carla, if you would stand, please. I'm not sure if the council realizes, but Carla is our new budget manager, started last fall. She's not new to the city of Bloomington. She started out in the police department, worked in Public Works, and then came, and we are just extremely delighted. So, a lot of the work on this budget has been done by Carla and Patty. I think it's also nice to point out, this is only the second year that we've used the new Munis budget module. So, there's been this ongoing, continued learning experience for not only these two individuals, but all the directors in the back, many of their staff members. And so, it's, we have continued to try and get more and more familiar with this particular budget module. And they've just done a tremendous job. So, we've, this year, as many others, I've just really relied on Patty and Carla and all the directors to put together this particular budget. Let me, if I can, I would like to just reminisce for a few minutes, because my first budget back in 2009 was pretty historic. Not only was our general fund in a negative position, we had a dozen or more other funds that were also in a negative position. Our bond credit rating was downgraded, and our cash reserves were several weeks away from being totally depleted. We had a large structural deficit, that among other things required the elimination of 71 full-time employees, or elimination of 71 full-time positions. We also had to lay off approximately a dozen employees. Almost no equipment was purchased in that year, and we had to borrow money even to do a small street resurfacing project. A fiscal recovery plan was implemented to begin that slow and painful process of restoring the city's fiscal health. Today, the general fund balance is just a little under $20 million. All the negative positions, with one or more exceptions of our many funds, have been eliminated. The city's credit rating is up to AA+ with a stable outlook, and critical capital equipment is beginning to be replaced, giving our employees safe and reliable tools to get the job done. As you're also aware, we've completed a number of major infrastructure master plans, including parks, sewer, stormwater, and even city facilities. We are working this upcoming year on completing the streets and transportation and water master plans. In summary, we are strong financially, and we are in the process of addressing our physical infrastructure. Unfortunately, there is a looming and great need that we need to collectively address with a sense of urgency. Specifically, I am referring to our human infrastructure, or in other words, the employees of the city that we rely on to provide the many services that we give and provide to our employees. Currently, our full-time employees number 619. This does include the library employees, and in addition, we have many, many other part-time and seasonal employees. For five years now, we've been operating on a very lean staffing model. For five years, our expectations of city staff has increased, not decreased. For five years now, we have accumulated a very large backlog of what I'll call city staff deferred maintenance. This is, there is a large and increasing backlog of uncompleted work that has been given a lower priority, because we are constantly going from high priority project to high priority project. A case in point is in the consent agenda you approved tonight. There was two MFT resolutions that you approved. This is one of only a couple of dozen IDOT-funded projects that date back, in some cases, a decade or longer. These, we continue to carry liabilities on our balance sheet, but we just haven't had the staff, because other priorities have required their time and attention. I could go on and on, from things like documents that need to be electronically filed, and so on. We have too few employees in most departments to get the job done right the first time, and complete the work at a level our employees can take great pride in. Managers cannot manage, because their time is spent on projects. And they also personally are helping to complete work that they cannot delegate to staff, because that staff is already overburdened with a backlog of work. I think it's also to point out that in the upcoming, next few years, we will continue to see a large number of our employees retire, the so-called baby boom generation, which I am part of. Employees are not operating, or, excuse me, employees are operating with too few written policies and procedures that we just haven't been able to get around to preparing. Employees are not receiving the appropriate level of training, and in many cases, cross-training to excel in their positions. Too many employees have not achieved a healthy level of work-life balance, and unfortunately, this is resulting in job stress, anxiety, and in many cases, burnout. Employee morale is low in part because of the lack of stability in the workplace, inadequate personnel resources, and the perennial talk of further cost-cutting measures. Furthermore, we are talking about embarking on a much-needed culture change and customer service initiative. As I meet with employees around the city, which I will admit is not often enough, I continue to hear time and again, employees state that they feel overworked, underappreciated, and undercompensated. Employees tell me they cannot, in some cases, even take all their vacation time. And furthermore, they feel guilty taking off legitimate sick leave, because of the burden that their absence in the workplace will have on their coworkers. Our short-term strategy to ask our employees to do more with less has now become the long-term strategy, and it is not physically sustainable. Our plan going forward has to be one in which we realistically balance our personnel resources with a realistic workload. This is exactly what we are doing with our capital improvement program. If we do not have the revenue to fund projects, we will not do the projects. Concurrently, if we do not have the personnel to complete the many programs and services we are tasked to complete, we need to eliminate some of those programs, reduce service levels, or add personnel. By investing in our employees, we can begin to truly revitalize our organization, rebuild trust and confidence with our employees, and allow our employees to take pride once again in the work we ask them to complete in a day-to-day basis. Tonight, I am not only recommending that you approve a $180 million budget, I'm also asking the city council to support the addition of 17 new full-time employees, and to provide funding to embark on an employee-engaged process to revitalize, and you might also say, right-size our organization. It is time that we begin to make a major investment in our employees by beginning to align our revenue with our expectations of city staff and the many critical services that they provide to our community. In the weeks ahead, and up to including our special March 22nd city council budget work session, I will share further information with you about how we need to refocus our attention on not asking more from our employees than they can reasonably complete. Furthermore, I think we all have very high expectations. I know I do of myself, but I believe going forward, we ought to have a goal that we want a high-performing organization, where employees feel like they can do not just mediocre work, but outstanding work, provide not just okay customer service, but outstanding customer service. They are yearning for our attention, our support, and for us to help right-size and make sure that we are asking them, year after year, to give 110%, but not to continue to impose upon them to the point where they cannot have a healthy work-life balance. Thank you for allowing me to take that few minutes tonight to talk about our most important asset, and that is our employees. It is not the trucks they drive, it is not the streets they repair, or anything else. It's our employees. And I'm asking this upcoming fiscal year that this be known as, the year that we really focus as much as having a strategic plan on our employees as we do for infrastructure and the many services we provide to our community. Now, I'd like to ask Patty Lynn Silva, our finance director, to come and to brief you and give some of the highlights of this very complicated and large budget for the fiscal year, which begins May 1st, 2014, and ends April 30th, 2015, which we're also referring to, just briefly, as the fiscal year 2015 budget. Patty.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and City Manager Hale. I'm anxious to talk to you about the budget tonight, and I wanted to thank you for your comments, David, about-
Patty Lynn, if you could speak a little closer in there, we're just hearing, having it, there's a little difficulty hearing you.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to say I'm grateful for the opportunity to talk to you tonight about the budget, and thank you for your comments, David, regarding the finance department and all their work, and the work of the departments. We really appreciate that. And I also want to just give a special thank you to Carla, who started with us in October, and has also had trial by fire, being thrown into the budget process and, on a very challenging and difficult budget year. So, thank you for that, and we appreciate the work of you, Carla, and the rest of the finance department who worked so hard, and the department heads putting up with us. So, I'm just going to jump right in and take you through the PowerPoint. Hopefully, you've all received a copy of that. There's some in the back of the room for those who want to kind of read along, and we'll just jump right in. As David mentioned, the FY '15 budget is $180 million. Comparing that to last year's adopted budget, which was $169 million, it's an $11 million increase, or an increase of 6.54%. The city expenditures by function, you can see by looking at this PowerPoint, that most of our expenditures are related to salary and benefits, with many service organizations in a similar situation. We have $64 million in salary and benefits. Our contractual line is also important here, because that's where you see our workers' comp and insurance as well, and also our contract, some, I'm sorry, some contract employees, so there's additional labor costs there. Some of our other costs are here, and we'll get into these in more detail, but just to give you a sense of what is driving this $180 million. We've broken this category down further, and you can see here that across all 28 funds that the city has, these are expenditures, and you can see that, again, most of our expenditures are in salary, benefit, and contractual. We have significant increases in salary and benefits and contractual, and again, we'll get into that in more detail, but again, for a total of an $11 million increase. We have, of the 28 funds that the city has, the general fund and the water fund combine 66% of the budget. So, we often talk about the general fund, but people wonder, what about all those other funds? Well, the bulk of our finances run through the general fund, it's our main operating fund, and it also supports some of our other funds when they can't support themselves. So, the general fund is our primary fund, and the water fund is our second-largest fund, making up 66% of the total budget. This summary is not as complicated as it looks. This is our fund balance summary, and I'd just like to point you really to the bottom, the grand total. So, we would, we project to begin the year with $71 million in fund balance across the city. We'd have a total of $172 million in proposed revenues for '15, $180 million in expenditures, leaving us with a $63 million citywide fund balance. It's important to note here that of all the fund balances that we have, the general fund, which would end with about 15%, is the only fund balance that we have that is really free to be spent in the event that there's an emergency. So, the $63 million that you see there, really, $13 million is available. So, if we have a major breakage, we have some unforeseen costs, and that's why the city's been working so hard since 2008 to build that to what you see now, which is just about 15%. So, we're not recommending any use of fund balance in this budget, because 15% is where we'd like to be, it was the city's goal since 2008, and also, the credit rating agencies really want you to have 15 or more. AAA communities have between 20 and 30%. As you look down, of all these other funds, another fund of note is our water fund. The water fund is projected to have almost 70% fund balance. They are doing about $8 million worth of capital projects this year, and they are doing a deliberate drawdown of fund balance. And in any of these events where you see that revenue is less than the expenditures, that is a planned use of fund balance. And again, we'll talk about those in more detail. Heading into revenue, the city has $172 million in revenue that we foresee coming in. This chart really points out strongly that taxes is about 50% of our citywide revenue, charges for services is a close second at 36%, so 85% of your revenues comes from those two categories. Broken down a little bit further, the taxes by function, I put our taxes in order here. We have about eight major tax revenues, nine if you break the second one up, the home rule and state. You can see that property taxes makes up about 28% of all of our total revenues, state and home rule sales tax makes up 36%. Utility tax is now 9%, and that does include our proposed increases that we'll be talking about shortly. Otherwise, they would have been down by food and beverage at the $4 million. Income tax is also 9%, and so on, totaling $83 million in taxes. Interesting, the property tax was adopted in the fall, as you know, and the taxes were not raised, the taxes were held constant, and so property tax for the city of Bloomington did not increase. It's always nice to point out that there are nine overlapping tax districts, although Bloomington has not raised taxes in some years. Some of the other, many of the other overlapping districts have, and so residents may see an increase in their property tax. Also, in red, the state and home rule sales tax. We are not proposing any increases in the state and home rule sales tax for this budget, but we will talk about the home rule sunset. The utility tax and a new amusement tax are being proposed, the amusement tax you can see on the bottom. The utility tax, we'll get into more detail. The utility tax, we'll get into more detail. The taxes that you see in orange, we don't have really any ability to increase, and then our food and beverage tax is already at equal to our peers, the hotel multi-tax is equal to our peers, so we recommended the utility tax for an increase, and then again, the new tax, the amusement tax. I should note that a portion of the cable tax is seen up in the utility tax. The amusement tax is estimated to bring in $1 million, and I will get into more detail later, but because of some new legislation, it'll be seen in the amusement tax going forward.
If I could just clarify, you're, it would be bringing the amusement tax as you're proposing it, also extra charges on BCPA or Colosseum tickets, whatever, would be a million annualized, but by the time we phase this in, you're only projecting we're gonna get $600,000 if the council adopts this in fiscal 2015?
I do have an estimate in there for a million, but the $400,000 will be seen in the utility in this, because it was previously taxed under utility, it is now an amusement tax for statutory reasons.
I see, okay, thank you.
So, there's a total of a million in the budget for cable.
I see, thank you.
Okay. City charges, which is the next largest area that we have in revenues, you can see that our number-one charge for service is water. City contributions are, is really almost an accounting of when we transfer contributions to other funds, solid waste fees, activity and program fees, and sewer and stormwater fees. There should be a total there on the bottom of $62 million, which is the total for that category. Solid waste fees, as you know, are recently raised, and some activity and program fees have been raised, I think the rental registration and perhaps some of the park-and-rec fees as well. But activity and program fees could be hundreds, hundreds of accounts. We're moving to the General Fund, since it is over 51% of the budget, and the one that, again, we lean on the most, is most crucial fund. You can see that the General Fund, we're proposing a $93 million budget compared to last year's adopted budget, is a 6.7 million dollar increase, or 7.8%. You can see that salary and benefits still make up 52% of that budget, not unlike the total of all the funds. And in the contractuals, which is 13%, again, to point out, the workers' comp premiums are in there, any contractual, employees temporary help is also seen in that line. Broken out a little bit further, you can see that in the General Fund, large amount of these increased for all funds, and it really stems from most of the increases in the General Fund. You can see that there's $6 million increase in salaries and benefits. As you'll see on the next slide, we'll break that out for you, there's about a million dollar increase in contractuals, and we have some also significant decreases. We have capital expenditures, which is down about $900,000. Our intergovernmental is up 1.7, and our transfer is out, which is our cash transfer for capital, is down about $2 million. So, the total increase in the General Fund is 6.7 million, that's of the $11 million total that you saw previously. In our expenditure highlights, the salary and benefits, the $6 million increase, $4 million of that is for our current staffing levels, 2.7 million of that relates to public safety. $1.6 million is new cost for our added staff that we're proposing, the 17 positions.
And Patty, let me, if I could, let me stop at that point, because I think it's important to point out to the council and the public that nearly $4 million increase relates to, if anything, this past year or the current fiscal year has been a year when many of these collective bargaining agreements were signed, ratified, there was a lot of retro pay, there were signing bonuses, and so basically, the last couple of years maybe was more understated, just because we were still in negotiations. Whatever money was allocated in the budget to help fund those in any particular year, at the year-end would lapse into General Fund balance, and then we would begin anew for the next year. So, there's, these increases are basically what you have approved in collective bargaining agreements. It's also what has been paid out for merit pay for the smaller segment of the employees. So, unfortunately, rather than having all these agreements that were active, and we had increases each year, there was a lot of this catch-up. We have spent considerable time trying to make sure that the projections of staffing and benefits is accurate going forward. In fact, I think it's as more accurate than anything I've seen in the five years. We've checked it, we've double-checked it, we tried to make sure that these are accurate. I also want to point out that just because we realize that we'll never achieve necessarily full staffing, especially like in police and fire, our budget also has a negative appropriation to account for the fact that, you know, at any one time, we could have two to three vacancies. So, so we're, yes, we're projecting for full staffing, but we also have a credit, you know, for the fact to budget, you know, realistically, for the fact that we're gonna have some vacancies. So, unfortunately, it's unique, but we also got to keep in mind that many of our collective bargaining agreements expire April 30th of this year, meaning next year, you know, or over the next six months, we're gonna have a lot of collective bargaining agreements be looked at, considered, ultimately, you know, have the council approve those if we can come to terms, and that will then give us more stability on what to project over the next two or three years, or however many years these collective bargaining agreements are gonna be for. So, it's just a very unique circumstance we've had, you know, so I just wanted, and the other thing is, we're trying to point out, I think oftentimes, we, and I think we all agree, that public safety is a very high priority, number one, but so much of our General Fund expenditures are driven by, you know, almost 40 to 50% or more by public safety, staffing, and benefit increases. So, it's, it is a real driver, you know, on the staffing levels in the General Fund, and we wanted to make sure we pointed that out. So, Patty, go back to you.
All right, thank you. In addition to the new staff of $1.6 million, there's $700,000 in costs, as David was talking about, the revitalization of the city organization plan. In addition, we've reduced the contributions to the Employee Healthcare Fund. The Employee Healthcare Fund has accumulated about $1 million in fund balance, so we've used about $300,000 of that this year to help balance the budget. Under contractuals, again, workers' comp and general liability insurance, in addition to contractual employees, has increased $1 million. It would have increased $2 million, but we've also reduced the workers' comp premium there because the workers' comp fund has about $3 million in fund balance that we will utilize if there's a significant issue. So, we'll still contribute the 2014 levels, we're just not gonna bring them up by $1 million.
If I can, just one other comment. We're a self-insured city for our insurance. On workman's comp, I think it needs to be pointed out, for police and fire, we have a deductible that is extremely high, about $550,000 per public safety individual. And what we do is, as we self-insure, when we do have a spike, say, in public safety, workman's comp, what we do is have that department, over five years, kind of ante up and pay for some of those spiked or increases costs. So, we're always trying to help make sure, over the long term, that each of the different departments or programs are fully funding our city's casualty or self-insurance fund for their actual contribution to the cost of workman's compensation as well as these others. So, that's why it's, just wanted to add that quick explanation. Thanks.
Okay. Continuing on, we have a $300,000 increase in insurance admin fees for our self-insurance fund, $150,000 of that is for a proposed safety coordinator. We have a $300,000 increase in temporary and contract employees, and a $200,000 increase in our general liability and property insurance premium.
I just want to say too, when you see that $150,000, that's just not wages, that's wages, benefits, all the contractual elements that go into a contractual position there.
And I think it's just an estimate at this point, a placeholder. In our expenditure highlights, continuing on, and capital expenditures have decreased. The city has included, or we have included, the $4.2 million in requests for capital equipment and vehicles. We're proposing to finance that through our capital lease program, which has been very good to us, with very low interest rates. In the past, we would have applied some cash to capital equipment and then provided the rest under capital lease. This year, we are doing no cash, and we are financing the full $4.2 million. Because of that, the principal and interest is increasing, $700,000 of that relates to the estimates for the new lease. Our intergovernmental section is increasing by $1.6 million, that corresponds directly to the police and fire pension funding policy, which has increased by 1.6 million. Our transfers out is important because that's where we transfer to other funds, and also we make our cash transfer to the capital improvement fund for general capital projects, and we are making a modest transfer of about $1.5 million, that's a decrease of $3.2 million. This is normally where we would make that transfer for the road, the street resurfacing program, that has been reduced in an effort to help balance the budget this year, because there is a $10 million bond, where the work will be completed this spring, it will be in both the '14 and '15 fiscal year. While we're taking a break from that for one year, the capital planning will continue. There is money in the budget for a street master plan, which would include a funding, and the sewer and stormwater rate studies, which corresponds to the master plans that were completed in fiscal '14. Also, in transfers out, we make our cash transfers to our debt service fund, which is required by our bond covenants, $1.4 million increase there. Part of that is for the $10 million street resurfacing bond, and then we have some other various covenants that we have to, we are required to fund. General Fund revenues, again, it's a similar picture to the revenues previously for all funds. Our biggest revenue source, 80%, is taxes in the General Fund, and then charges for Our major taxes are the state and home rule sales tax, the property tax, the income tax, and with the increase in utility tax, that's now become one of our bigger revenues. All other taxes are $12 million. This is a nice graph, because it points out where we're heavy, but also, again, pointing out the state and home rule and property tax have not been increased. The property tax, I wanted to point out, is, again, not increased, but it was last increased, council acted in fiscal year '10, and it was effective in fiscal year '11. The home rule sales tax is not proposed to increase in the budget. It was last increased in fiscal '08, effective in '09, by a quarter point. It's important to note that that will sunset in the fiscal year '16 budget, but in order to make sure that that, we have all the paperwork in, and we can continue to fund the debt service, we need to act on that beforehand, and so we're proposing that the sunset be removed during this budget process.
Just to clarify, that's the Colosseum debt service and?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The Colosseum and BCPA debt service, yep. Just to point out that most of our revenues are considered elastic, with the exception of the property tax, which is pretty, you know, you levy it, we're gonna get it, you know, it's a 99% collection. The rest of our revenues are really based on consumption, spending, our local economy. We've had some very good years in the past, it's been very fruitful for us, we are seeing some signs of decline, some plateaus, so that has resulted in modest projections for the FY15 proposed budget. To help fill that gap, we are proposing an increase in the utility tax and the creation of a new amusement tax. The city's utility taxes are proposed to be raised to the maximum statutory limits. Raising these taxes could achieve up to $3 million in new revenue streams in fiscal year '15. It would increase by another 1.1 million in fiscal year '16, should it be adopted. The amusement tax is proposed to charge a 4% tax on amusement-
If I could just clarify that, the reason it would be going up is because it's gonna take, if the council passes it, it would take a while to phase that in-
Yes.
-in the current year.
Yes.
So, the increase is not in a rate, it's-
Correct.
-in the calendar year that we call our fiscal year?
Yes.
Not calendar, fiscal year, sorry.
There's four components to the, to the utility tax, and each one is slightly different, and when you can file, and when you can get the paperwork changed, and when we can collect. So, because of that, we're not gonna achieve the full $4.2 million that we believe this revenue, new revenue stream would provide, but we do think we'll get about $3 million in fiscal year '15. The amusement tax, which is a brand-new tax, currently, when you go to the movies, you go to a sporting event, you do anything where you're not getting a piece of tangible personal property, there is no tax. The city is proposing, or the city, the city manager, is proposing a 4% tax on amusement for participative and exhibitive entertainment, including but not limited to sporting events, theatrical, musical events, movies, bowling, cable, and DVD movie rentals. Many of these would be seen on our own facilities, BCPA admissions, the Colosseum admissions, and one of the bigger ones there is cable used to be taxed under the utility tax, it's now required to be under an amusement tax. Tax exemptions we're proposing would apply to all the standard charitable, religious, and other non-for-profit organizations, in addition to youth programs and some other potential non-for-profits that may not be formal non-for-profits, but you would not anticipate taxing such as youth sporting teams and so forth. We, amusement tax is very hard to project, especially as a new tax, but we think we can achieve up to $1 million in new revenue, and perhaps more than that. FY15 will let us know if you adopt that. This is a proposed tax increase by rate, and breaking out the utility tax into the electric, natural gas, telecommunications, and water. Electric is, by statute, done by a range, and then people pay on per kilowatt-hour used. The lower the range, the higher the cents per kilowatt is used, and then it declines as you use more electric. We're proposing to go to the statutory limits on that, most of our peers are already at that limit, normal is at the limit, so we wouldn't be at a disadvantage in comparison to normal. Natural gas is at 2.5% or .75 cents per therm, that would be the equivalent in cents per therm. We are proposing to go to the limit of 5% or whatever the cents per therm would be equivalent to that. When you buy out of state or non-NICOR, you have to go into cents per therm rather than a percentage. The telecommunications tax is already being levied on cellphones. We're proposing to go to the statutory limit on that to 6%. And we have on our own water utility, and we're taxing folks 2.5% now, the statutory limit is 5%. And again, the amusement is a new tax, going up to 4%. We tried to approximate what an average resident would use in utilities, and we have several scenarios available, we've brought some printouts with us, but for electric, and our original scenario, it took a monthly bill amount of $50 for each one of these four components, and we realized perhaps that people pay more in electric than they do in gas, and they pay more for their cellphone than they do in water. So, we did try to approximate what we thought an average resident, the impact would be. So, the table reads in the first column, if you have a $100 electric bill, we're currently taxing you $2.86, that would increase to about $6.28. The natural gas, we're taxing you on a $50 bill, $1.29, that would just about double to $2.58. Telcom would go up based on what your cellphone bill is, and these are, again, monthly charges. It would go up to $4.20, and water would go up to $2.50 for a $50 bill. So, if your total monthly tax, utility taxes are about $270, we're already receiving about $8 from you, we would receive another 15, and we would receive, I'm sorry, 15, which would be an addition of $7.71 a month, or about $92 a year. We tried to give some examples of amusement tax, it really should say on average price because not everything here is a ticket, but for example, if you went to the movies and it was $10, or 4% would be 40 cents per ticket. Bowling, $5 a game would be about 20 cents per person per game. BCPA tickets range, an average, I think, is 35, but we already have that up there for golf, so we use 25, and you'd pay about a dollar on a $25 ticket at the BCPA. Colosseum average ticket at $50, you would be taxed at 4%, which would be $2. The zoo admission is $6, we'd create to about $24. We'd create to about 24 cents. And golf, an average daily green fee would be $35 or $1.40. The big piece here is cable. This is a monthly bill, so if your cable bill was $80, you would forward to the city $3.20. So that would, that $3.20 multiplied by 12 is the impact on the cable bill. We'll be providing more examples and more education and the actual proposed ordinances on this as we move closer to your Saturday, March 22 meeting. Some other budget highlights that are important to note is the facilities plan was completed. We do have limited funds in the general fund, but a quarter million dollars has been put in the budget for high-priority life and safety issues as well as ADA compliance that they suggested fixing in year one. Sewer has requested $2.6 million in capital projects. Four of them are from the sewer master plan. We're leaving $2 million in the sewer fund balance until we can complete the sewer rate study, but in addition, we have some exposure there based on some annexation agreements that the city is currently under. We have $300,000 in for a street's master plan. This is where we would look to not only measure the true cost of what we need to do to our roads, but also come up with a funding plan for you and come back to you in the '16 budget with a major road plan, a major streets plan. In the stormwater fund, we really have no capital projects going forward. The rates have not been increased since 2004, so there was, to keep them in a positive cash position, there is no capital projects proposed, but the rate study is in their fund to help us try to fund both the sewer and stormwater master plan. So funds for the study are in there. For the solid waste fund, with the new rate structure that the council has adopted, we believe that the solid waste fund will be positive by fiscal year 2017. And the golf funds, the golf funds are one of the funds that David was talking about as well that's still in a little bit of a negative cash position. They had a very wet spring last year. We were unable to put forward a lot of their capital needs. We don't anticipate them, we anticipate them having a little bit of a wet spring this year, and perhaps those revenues won't come in, but we did put one capital project in there and we transferred money from the general fund, which you'll see in the budget. The motor fuel tax fund will still be doing $1.4 million worth of capital, and the water fund is doing $8.5 million worth of capital projects. They are using a large amount of their fund balance for that, but they were 100% funded in their fund balance, so they did have cash, and that was the intention of building that reserve. A million dollars for that is going into the Southwest well construction, and there are numerous other projects that we'll get into more detail on closer to the 22nd. And just a couple of last charts for you, comparing this year's capital, last year's capital. In the capital improvement fund, you can see the $10 million for roads is in there. That's part of that 16 million, and this year, we'll be doing about 1.8 million. The motor fuel tax usually spends about $2 million a year, but for timing reasons, they're only spending 1.4 this year. Water's spending 8.5 million, sewer 2.5, stormwater is doing none. The golf course is doing one project, and that is funded by the general fund. And US Cellular Coliseum is actually asked for all equipment this year, so they are in the capital lease program that we previously talked about. And this is the capital equipment chart. You can see the $4.2 million under the general fund. Water has some equipment. Solid Waste still has a couple of things that they need. Golf, not too much. Sewer and storm, we're holding on equipment. And Coliseum is put in for a variety of things, which we will provide you the detailed list. It is in your books, but we'll provide you some additional exhibits. And also on the capital equipment, we wanted to point out that there are two, for the first time, we'll be entering into a 10-year lease because two engines have been requested in the past. They have been done on five-year capital leases, which is a little, you can go out much, much longer. They use these engines for almost 15 years, maybe longer. So we're suggesting, are proposing financing those on 10-years basis. In addition, an important point to point out is the Starcom radio upgrades. I'm sure the fire chief will touch on that when he has an opportunity to speak to you on how critical the need the Starcom radio upgrades are to both the police communication center and in the fire department. And that's it. That's the entire proposal.
Let me just make a few final comments. One, I think it's important to point out that I think a key term we've got to be thinking about, not only this year, as you discuss this budget, but in the next two to three years, and that is financial sustainability. And I say that because in years past, we just haven't had the manpower to really more accurately project what's coming up, not only the next 12 months, but the next two to three years. In the months ahead, we're going to be working much more diligently, trying to also give you a glimpse of what's coming up in fiscal year 2016, 2017, and at least sometime within the next three to five years. It's my belief that sooner we can bring to your attention and knowledge challenges that we're going to face, you know, in future fiscal years, we can begin at this point in time to proactively begin to address those. I think a second thing is I've been sharing with Mayor Renner is that I'm very committed to do whatever we can to continue to engage the citizens on very, you know, unique budgets like we have here tonight. We've tried open houses in the past. We've tried newsletters, and we've tried other means, but frankly, I'm a great, I'm committed to the fact that when we need to start asking the citizens to do some things that they may not like to do, such as pay more taxes, it is our burden, our obligation to help all citizens also better understand why. Why is it that we're having to ask for additional revenue to provide the services we are providing to the city? It's always to, and I think we continue to hear more and more of how our stakeholders would like expanded services. I think we've just seen that in the last few weeks on snow removal. We are seeing a lot of requests for an enhanced level of service, which is going to come at greater cost. Unfortunately, one of the most difficult, I think, answers for elected officials and even staff to say is no. We just can't do that. It's not in the budget. We don't have the financial resources. But I think it's even a greater question to ask them, what services are you willing to pay for? Or if we're looking to just continue, and in some cases here, we're, even that $4 million in additional personnel costs, we're not talking about adding additional personnel for that portion of the budget. It's just to afford all the current program services we have here. But there's a lot of innovative and creative ideas around the nation of how city councils, mayors, city managers, and staff have looked to help get citizens engaged too. I think the more we can inform them, the better. They can help give you feedback to help you support or be feel like you're ready to make some of those very difficult choices. And last but not least, during 2014, to me, one of the greatest study items I would propose that needs to be on our collective agenda or action plan is to work on developing this five- or 20-year capital improvement program. As I mentioned, we've completed a lot of these master plans. What we're still working on is what can we afford over the next five years, 10 years, or 20 years? But how does that, and unfortunately, what we can afford pales in comparison to our estimated $400 million in deferred maintenance, deferred projects, deferred investment in infrastructure. And frankly, I don't think there's any way we can come up with probably a palatable, aggressive approach without educating our citizenry, our businesses, of what are the needs? What can we pay for with current fees? But if we want to get more aggressive and more proactive, what's it going to take in revenue? But more importantly, what's going to be the results? What can we do to show and demonstrate that this council and this administration wants to be very proactive to find a solution to some very aging infrastructure in this city, similar to what you did with the police and fire pension funding policy? So once again, I just want to say, Mayor and Alderman, myself, finance, and all directors stand ready to assist you over the next couple of months as you consider this budget. State law requires that the annual budget be adopted by the council on or before the last part of April. We'll be working in trying to get more information, answer more questions between now and the Saturday workshop, but we look forward to doing all we can to assist you in this very critical decision you'll have to make, and that is what is going to be our financial plan to provide critical services to not only our 77,000 residents, but the 3,000 businesses we have in our community. Mayor and Alderman, thank you.
Right. Well, again, we've, just to clarify for everyone in the audience, we have had small group meetings with the Alderman, myself, Patty Lynn Silva, and David Hales to begin to kind of unveil what some of the issues were in the budget. This is the official presentation. We have technically at least exceeded our time, but I do want to go around and have some quick questions we're going to have on the 22nd. Is that correct, David, of March?
Saturday, March 22nd.
And that's pretty much an all-day budget session, meeting, and discussion. So we're going to be going through that thoroughly. Obviously, we're going to be talking about this and talking with our constituents in many different environments. So at this point, this is just sort of the first public presentation of what the city manager and the staff are proposing and the projections that they've made. So I wonder if I could go around, if I have some, you know, quick questions. Obviously, the debate on this is only beginning, and we're going to go from there. I believe Alderman Fazini has that first. Anyone else? And Alderman Fruehmann and Black. Go ahead, Alderman Fazini.
Okay, let's start. There was a slide that had salaries going up 11.83% and salary benefits going up 21.15%. That doesn't mean everybody in the city got an 11.83% salary increase, does it, city manager?
It does not. However, however, I will say, I know in talking with Patty, we do have in some situations, again, over the catch-up over two to three years, that with longevity increases and other things that you may not always see, but yes, there could be some occurrences, but that would be over a two-to-three-year period.
Right. I just don't want anybody to walk out of here with the impression that our staff is averaging 11.83% more salary, because that's not realistic. We also talked about adding 17 people. How much in dollars would that be annually? Do you have that number?
That was in there. Do you know what that?
1.6 million.
1.6 million.
With salary and benefits.
And what percentage increase is that in number of how many people we have? And now we go up to that plus 17. Is that 12%? 2%?
Like 3%, right? 600 employees?
2%.
Out of 600?
Two and a half percent.
Just 2%? Okay, good. The average term of capital leases, since we weren't putting cash in and the interest rates are very low, it sounds like the right decision, but how long are the leases typically?
Up until this point, they've been five years.
Five? Okay, that works. And the interest rate on the $10 million street bond, is that around 2%?
The true interest cost, I can't remember, but it was a very good rate.
Right, right in that area? Okay. And the taxes that we were suggesting that be increased were all taxes that we as citizens would pay 100% of the increase?
Yes. Well, the amusement tax could be paid by?
Other people, out of the community.
Yes.
The one tax that we didn't talk about and we have in the past is a local motor fuel tax, where 30% of it's paid by people from outside our community. I think we need to put that in the mix rather than leaving it out entirely. Just a thought. I'd rather have other people helping us than us absorbing all of it on our own. Thanks.
Okay. Alderman Fruehmann, then Black and Sterns.
Thank you, Mayor. I think these are primarily comments, but if you'd like to respond, you can, or if you want to save them for another day, that's fine. And I'll start out with a small edit, I think, on page 27. I think we're referring to Jersey and Linden. I suspect the bridge we're talking about is at the bottom of the hill, so maybe Jersey and Ethel Parkway. Is that the one we're talking about? Jersey and Linden is actually normal.
I got that, Jim.
Jersey is right there. That actually is City of Lumington responsibility down there. And then the Linden one is the one just north of Emerson. That is still in the City of Lumington. It actually turns into normal just north of that.
So which one are we talking about? The one on Linden or the one on Jersey or both?
Both.
Okay, thank you.
And I just want to point out, in the second book, you'll have a detailed description of each project, a map, so you can always look there as well.
I guess, thank you. Mayor, the other thing that I just want to echo, it's what everybody's talked about, is the citizen engagement. And we talked about that in our individual meeting. And so we've got the choice now between now and April about offensive or defensive. And I think that's so critical because I think there's so many residents that really don't understand what percentage of that property tax dollar comes to us, that we've been flat for four or five years, et cetera, et cetera. And I just don't think that can be repeated enough. I think one perfect example of that right now, and I don't, I'm not asking for a big analysis, but I think if we had a quick expense of what, the greater expense we paid in January and February for our snow, ice efforts, and our water line breaks and things like that, and I don't know how quick that is to pull that up, but I think that'd be a number that the public would like to hear, that this year has cost us X number of dollars more than the typical year, because this budget was put together, rightfully so, in the fall and early winter, and I think we're going to find what's happened in January and February is going to be a greater expense and a greater need than what we thought a couple of months ago. So I think that's one of those stories we need to tell. And I think the more we can engage the citizen and be offensive, the better off we'll be. Need to tell our story. Thank you.
Alderman Black and Sterns, and now Alderman Sage. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. And Patty Lynn, great presentation. I liked seeing it all broken down very nicely, and I especially liked our conversation that Alderman Sterns and Mayor Renner and I had last week with David and Patty, and I appreciate you guys both indulging me for about an hour or so afterwards as we kind of dug into the budget. This being my first budget as an Alderman, my focus here isn't so much on yes or no, but more of the how. And one of the things that I'm trying to do is balance some of the commentary that I'm getting from citizens. And I'll be frank, I've gotten people that have said, "I'm tired of the city nickel-and-diming everything. Just raise my property taxes and get it done with." And I've also had people that say, "Our taxes are too high. Sell the Coliseum, cut out parks and rec, only focus on the city." So trying to find an approach somewhere in the middle, I think is going to be the best case. I definitely want to echo Alderman Fruehmann's comments about really engaging with the citizens to hear that. And so this reminds me of, you know, as I was growing up, I remember taking walks with my mom, and we would talk about the political issues of the day, and she would always take the opposite side of whatever I was trying to persuade her. And in this case, I want to challenge the public and I want to challenge us as Aldermen to really think about the opposite side of what we think. So when we have people that will come up and say, you know, "I want to see a higher level of service performed from the city." Okay, how would you like to pay for that level of service? Is it going to come through these taxes? Is it going to come through increased fees? And conversely, if you want to see services cut and taxes decreased or held steady, what services would you like to see cut? And I like to see examples, you know, specifically about that, not just 10% across the board, but really detailed. And we have the budget now, we can dig into it, and I think that's going to be the homework here. And the how is what's going to be very important to me. So I look forward to hearing all of the commentary from citizens and other Aldermen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alderman Sterns, and then Sage.
A quick, a couple of quick things, Patty, and thank you for the presentation. Of the 17 million, I mean, I'm sorry, of the 17 employees, how many are public service that are proposed? We saw this the other day, but I don't have my handout.
When you, I'm sorry.
How many of those 17 employees are public service? I think there were three firefighters.
Public safety.
You mean public safety.
Public safety, I'm sorry. Right.
Two police, two police, and three fire.
So out of those five are public safety. Right.
Yes.
And then the other 12, I know, I guess we're hiring a communications director. Is that correct? For the city?
That's in the current year budget.
Okay, okay. And these are various other administrative assistance, that kind of thing?
Legal, pace, public works, parks, finance, and admin.
Okay. So it's extra staff to relieve some of this pressure that we've been hearing about. And one of the things that I think I'm certainly hearing is that, yes, by all means, snow removal, you know, pothole now fixing, I mean, major. I don't think we've even hardly scratched the surface of a lot of our cave-ins, water main breaks. We've had a lot of frozen service, water main breaks, we've had a lot of frozen service, water services, really a tremendous amount of expense that, yes, indeed, I think our citizens do expect, infrastructure repair and maintenance. As far as the other 12 hires, I'm not sure people really understand, you know, what function these folks are providing and what they're getting for this extra $8 a month minimum. It seems like we're almost looking at every available tax and raising it almost to its max, almost to its legal max, plus we're planning on not, we're planning on putting back the sales tax, on not allowing the sales tax to sunset. And let's not forget that our school districts are looking at pretty significant sales tax increase. So I just wanted to comment that so many of these utilities and sales taxes, they may mean nothing to those of us who have a lot of disposable income, it may be like no brainers, but the people out there in Bloomington, there is a lot of suffering of the average citizen who has been, as Scott alluded to, feeling like they are getting nickelled and dimed with every single possible tax. And, you know, we hear all the time about our businesses leaving Illinois, about Illinois is, I guess, third in the nation for outmigration, people saying that's enough. And I wonder where do we reach that threshold, where people are just saying, you know, almost "I'm out of here," or "I'm cutting something else," or "I've just had enough," because I do think that people are somewhat maxed out. Maybe not us, you know, maybe not those of us with a lot of disposable income, but the hard-working, working poor, fixed incomes, people like that, which we actually have a lot of in Bloomington, a lot of it, my ward, Scott's ward, Kevin's ward, and they're extremely concerned about yet another push, higher and higher, to seemingly to the max. And what are they getting for it? I think they might want to understand these extra administrative folks, communications, et cetera, and how that really benefits, you know, them, because they are struggling, struggling. Thank you.
Alderman Sage.
A comment and a question. Just for the budget workshop, on page 24, you refer to it, the average resident, I think, is what you made reference to. And so if you can kind of outline or illustrate what that is, so that that's maybe a little bit clearer for folks to understand. And so let me kind of compare and contrast, when we've talked about the property tax before, we usually talk about a home valued at $150,000 or something, just, you know, that type of thing for an average resident, right? And then maybe just to tag on to what some others have said, I think it's, so David, you said that, you know, we need to tell the story of why we're asking for more taxes, or potentially to do that. And so what's also, I think, incumbent on this council, people who don't want to see taxes increased, it's incumbent on the members of this council to bring suggestions to the table. I mean, that's the flip side of that, is that, you know, we have to have some accountability as the governing body to do that, right? So it's not just enough to say, you know, "We're not going to raise taxes." There has to be some, the Aldermen have to have some skin in the game with citizen engagement and conversations and all of those aspects around that, but to be able to say, what services are we prepared to say we're willing to either reduce or eliminate. We need the staff's help to do that, but that's what we own. And so that's what I'll be looking for, you know, for myself and from my council colleagues as we get into that budget workshop and some of those other conversations. So I appreciate your reference to that, thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any, oh, Alderman Lawrie, sorry.
Just a few comments here. With all due respect, City Manager, you talk about financial sustainability, and in terms of our personal, as Judy pointed out, we do have a lot of folks that are still under stress, they have not recovered from our recession, we talked about that. We also have a number of businesses that are right on the edge, okay? And Alderman Fruein typically emails quite frequently about those that fail. And we have to realize that we're changing their environment when we do this. So a couple of little things I'd like to just kind of review, I think we need to keep very mindful of the environment that we're asking people to deal with. Illinois Policy Institute, here in the last week or so, just released a new report. One of the things that Judy pointed out, the state of Illinois is the third-largest loser of taxable income in the U.S. from the period of 1992 to 2010, okay? Also, the U.S. Census Bureau and the IRS fold into this between that same period, 1992 to 2010. Illinois is ranked third worst state for net loss of population, only behind California, who is bankrupt, by the way, and New York. A net loss of 350,000 taxpayers, those are the folks that are actually paying for what we're asking for, okay? And a total net loss of greater than 900,000 net citizens in the state of Illinois. $30 billion in annual taxable income, workers leaving the state. Illinois is the third-largest loser of workers leaving a state. The $7 billion in taxable income actually went to the state of Florida alone, okay? Economic environment causes residents to flee, and we need to be very mindful of that. Bloomington's been very sheltered, but we have some things that are changing in our environment that even government can't control here. So we've got a lot of things that are happening. We also have a state government that's out of control, okay, quite frankly. They're talking about a progressive tax scheme, which would be an increase to the same citizens that we're talking about raising taxes on ourselves. We've got a healthcare issue nationwide that is definitely going to infect probably everyone in this room here in the next 18 to 24 months, one way or another. So I think those are some of the things that we have to, if we're going to think about this, we need to think about the entire picture, okay? Thank you very much. I know you've put a lot of work into this.
Actually, Alderman Lauble, last but not least, I guess.
Okay, thank you. I definitely appreciate the work, and it's sobering. I guess what I'd like to reiterate is that it's important for us to be able to educate the citizens. I think we have, in my opinion, in the few years that I've been on the council, there is a disconnect between expectations and what people are willing to pay for, or whether or not they know what they're getting out of the city staff and some of the services that we provide. So I think we need to find a way to kind of close that gap. One of the ways that I think we could do that is to also share the history of some of the fees that we've had over the years, and how much they haven't, not that I'm advocating for that, but I think it will help in the conversation to know that in certain cases that we've had the same fee for over 10, 15, 20 years. And that is something, you know, if you are, I think anybody who is a business owner knows that it's very difficult to be able to absorb the increased cost without having to raise a fee. So I think that should be part of the conversation as well, to help us make a better decision and to help people decide whether or not they want to go this route, you know, go left or go right. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, this is only the beginning of a very long, robust debate about our budget, and obviously the stakes are really high for our employees, for our citizens, for everyone. And we certainly appreciate the public trust, and we will be reaching out to our citizens, they've already begun to reach out to us, and so we will continue forward. I'm going to go ahead and turn to City Manager, do you have any additional comments for us on the City Manager's discussion?
Yes. One other thing, I do want the council and the public to know, we will be putting the 600 pages of the budget book out on our website. We'll also be providing you with a disc, and we'll also have discs of the budget available for citizens for a nominal fee if they want to get that that way. So hopefully, everyone will take the opportunity to review this. I've seen some budgets that have been nothing more than a bunch of computer printouts. Hopefully, people will appreciate, we're trying to explain what are the programs and services we provide, what are our performance metrics, you know, so just really trying to educate, but trying to read through 600 pages to get a full appreciation for $180 million is time-consuming, but nevertheless, we're going to make that very available. Mayor and Council, I would like to have John Kennedy come up for just a quick minute. Unfortunately, on March 10th, there is a deadline for a state grant application. We're not necessarily recommending this application tonight, but I do recall an email that Alderman Schmidt sent about two grant opportunities, the Park Grant and the OSLAD. And I think I responded, but I'm not sure if I got information out to all the council. Would you just briefly mention this? And again, what we, our objective here is just make sure the council understands there is this grant opportunity, we don't have to apply. However, it is coming up quickly, but we just wanted to inform you of one particular opportunity, but it deals with a potentially controversial facility. John?
Great, yes, thank you, City Manager Hales. There's a, the grant that was recently announced through the Illinois Department of Natural Resources is the Illinois Park and Recreational Facility Construction Grant Program. The acronym PARK, P-A-R-C, was created in 2009, basically funds appropriated from the Build Illinois Bond Fund. This grant has a turnaround application deadline of March 10th, you know, so it's a very short timeframe. This grant is basically for bricks and mortar construction-type projects of parks and/or recreational facilities only. So it's really narrow in scope of the types of projects that could qualify for this grant. It's a 75% state match, 25% would be the local match is the percentage there, and there's a $2.5 million cap on the size of any one project. A local government such as the City of Bloomington, we could put in as many applications as we wanted. There's an application fee of a minimum, minimum of $100, maximum of $300. And again, the application deadline is coming up very quickly, March 10th, and that's why we're here to have a quick discussion. Really, with that short turnaround timeframe, you know, we really have two different projects that you see listed on the handout that could be, that we could make good, solid cases for and be able to put together a good grant application. It has to do with the Creativity Center, both projects do. One is a, what we're calling the Infrastructure Project, which comes from our facility assessment recommendations, some needed, some needs that that building has, roof repair, facade repair, things of that nature, roughly a $600,000 price tag, that if we were successful with the grant, 75% of that would be covered by the state. Our match would actually be coming from privately raised funds that we already have in the bank, that would not come from city funds.
Just to clarify that, the Creativity Center is about $1 million of privately raised money.
Correct.
And so that they would be able to use that, it wouldn't require us...
Right.
...to necessarily allocate anything out of taxpayers' dollars.
That is correct.
In order for us to apply for this grant?
Correct.
So the match doesn't have to come from the City of Bloomington, it can come from those private dollars?
Correct.
I see.
Correct. So that is, that's one possibility. The other possibility is the larger Creativity Center renovation project, which could be greater than the two and a half million, but we could, you know, we could design the project to at least do the facility assessment recommendations that I just mentioned, plus additional work in the project that would, it's staff office improvements, the Black's Box Theater, other interior and exterior enhancements. So we could try to leverage the maximum amount of the grant, and there is enough privately raised funds currently on hand to cover that 25% match requirement.
So that could be the case for either of these?
That's correct.
So these, as long as you can get these grants done, this could be budget-neutral from the standpoint of the City of Bloomington?
Correct.
Okay.
Let me give a little history, though. Again, the council might recall that previously, these private, I think it was the private funds, wasn't it paid for kind of a total design for how the Creativity Center ultimately needs to be remodeled, rehabbed? However, it was about a $5 million price tag to fully remodel the facility as what the Cultural Commission, Cultural District Commission envisioned. The council, however, never took a vote to support either moving ahead with that so that the private individuals could begin to expand their capital campaign, raising dollars, or that the city council and the city would commit to fully fund, or at least be responsible for ongoing operations with whatever business plan they had. So there was a lot of information, but there never was a council commitment to pull the plug, so to speak, and give the green light for additional money to be raised, and that ultimately, they would say, "We're in agreement with trying to ultimately have private funds help be raised to improve upon the Creativity Center." So just, and I know some of you are very much aware of that, and that...
Just to make clear here, then, though, for you to move forward, because this isn't even on our agenda, so we really can't necessarily, you kind of what, some kind of sense of the council, you wouldn't be, you could conceivably move ahead with this without asking us to commit to public money, just in terms of concept.
Correct.
And this presumably would then allow them to leverage the Creativity Center to raise more private money, because this is coming.
Correct.
We might, you know, we'd probably have to come back and have you retroactively approve this application. Somewhere, somehow, there has to be some sort of statement made as to pledging that $1 million, and that's only, I think the city has ultimate control on releasing that. So yes...
Even releasing the private funds?
Yeah. So ultimately, the council would have to take some vote. Typically, they look for resolutions, written records in the minutes. So in the future, we'd want to come back, if there seemed at least a general sentiment, let's at least apply it. Just because we apply for the grant doesn't mean that if approved, we would sign a grant contract agreement. But the worst thing we were trying to avoid, we didn't want to have March 10th come and go and have the council feel like, "Why didn't staff bring this to our attention?" Again, we just haven't had the manpower to really address this as it came to our attention. And this deadline came up much quicker, you know, than anything else we've had recently.
We've got a couple of Aldermen have questions. Alderman Sage, I noticed first, and then Alderman Schmidt.
So I want to be clear, because I remember when we talked about this, you know, a couple years ago, you know, it's kind of like deja vu all over again, right? So while you're, while it is correct to say it's budget-neutral from a build perspective or a construction perspective, the city would then be on the hook, though, for staffing, operations, and maintenance going forward after these capital projects are done?
I would say yes.
Sure.
Yes.
I mean, and again, that goes back to conversations we've had the last few years about, you know, always kind of the long tentacles of these grants.
Yes.
And seemingly getting on the hook without either knowing that or understanding the impacts of that. So I guess what I'm saying is that, you know, at some point, public money comes into play. I mean, if we apply for the grants, the state's going to assume that we're going to take it. You know, I mean, we're not going to apply for the grant and then not cut the contract, you know? So getting inherent in that, then, is, it might be a million dollars of private funds, but at some point, that clicks over to public money for, again, for the operation, the staffing, the maintenance, any other, you know, capital expenses going forward. And so again, that's always a reference point I have to remind myself of, that, again, this thing has some long arms on it, right?
Right. And the former BCPA manager did put together kind of a projection on those operating costs, they were very, very low. I'm not sure that I'm totally 100%, you know, have the confidence in those numbers, but anyway, the council received that.
And the BCPA currently operates in a deficit, is that correct?
The city provides a $1.7 million subsidy for the BCPA operations, correct?
Thank you.
Alderman Schmidt.
Well, I guess the counterpoint to that, Dave, is that that's going to be, remain unresolved regardless. And I totally understand your point that, you know, that the city likely, we have to look ahead to the likelihood that the city has some obligation to this building, which is part of the cultural district. But it's unresolved whether or not we go for this grant. And it's been made clear to me over and over again, as we see with Miller Park Zoo, that if we don't, if nothing happens with the already $1.1 million that have been privately raised, there is no chance we'll get any other privately raised dollars for that. So it's sort of a stasis. So why not, if we have the information, why not use the, some of the privately raised dollars to do the infrastructure projects, show some forward momentum with this, and then enable the fundraising to go forward for more private dollars? then enable the fundraising to go forward for more private dollars to get it going and, you know, begin to craft what it looks like, what an organization looks like, and whether we have skin in the game or not. But I feel like we're constantly stalling this, and it's never going to get off the ground then, and we've still got $1.1 million of good faith dollars from the public. So I guess, I think we've done an awful lot of background work. We, the, you know, the folks who've looked at the infrastructure, I think we have quite a few details of what that would look like. The writing, you know, is hard, but I think we have the details. So, you know, I would be inclined, I'm not looking at the rental project so much as the infrastructure project, to say, let's put a little gas in this engine and begin to use some of the money that has been raised.
Just to clarify, this is our building, right? It's the city of Bloomington, and it's, as I understand it, the roof is like in pretty bad shape.
Correct. And staff is, you know, we do have staff in this building as it is, correct?
As it is. And so basically, even, it may be that we have some operating expenses at some point down the line, but we are talking, or not, but we are talking about getting some 75% state money, 25% private money to fix up our building.
Correct.
Moka Millawaway, please.
Okay. Two questions. Are we... Are there any restrictions on that $1.1 million? Because I know when donors give money, sometimes there are restrictions.
Yes, it needs to be... The money is required to be spent on BCPA Creativity Center projects.
Okay. And the second question is, if we don't do anything, could we lose that money at one point or another?
Well, it's been given to us by donors. Now, there is a small piece of that is a HUD grant, and that's... There's $133,000 in a HUD grant, that if we don't spend it, it's possible we could lose that. The others was privately donated funds, that that would be a decision we would have to make, what do you do with that?
Sometimes donors can rescind their donations if they don't see anything happening, right?
Sure.
Okay. All right.
What is the action?
Well, this isn't, it's not an action item. We really, I mean, at this point, because it's not on here, we can't take a vote on it.
That's right.
We're just kind of a general sense of the council.
Regular tier knowledge and attention, we want it, you know, so you could have some discussion, but again, you can't take any action.
And then ultimately, when, if you go ahead and apply for one of these, and if we're successful, then we have to approve this going forward, okay? So this is kind of FYI, right? Okay. Yeah, and I realize this at the last moment, I'm sure it puts the council in an awkward position tonight, at the last moment, after we've had, you know, lots of discussions and multiple meetings, to try to give reasonable feedback at this point is probably quite difficult. Okay. All righty. Thank you very much. And I just want to, I'll be very quick because of the, we've run over, and we've had a lot of meetings this evening. I just want to thank Marlene Gregor, who's not here, but I wish she were, because she is responsible for the newest art gallery that has been established in the city of Bloomington, and that is in the mayor's office. So I invite all of you to come in and take a look at the rich artwork that she has. I had barren walls, it was really not, it was not a pretty sight. I'm still envious of Chris Coos's office, but if you want to come in at some point, I'm happy to show you around it, and all of the artwork is for sale as well. It's on loan. I also want to let everybody know I'm going to be with City Manager David Hales and Alderman Sterns, we're going on a One Voice trip, and some of us, I believe, Alderman Scott Black and who else is going to NLC, Alderman Millawaway. And so I will not be here at the next city council meeting. We have a very special tribute to Alderwoman, former Alderwoman Jennifer McDade, and I thank in advance Mayor Pro Tem Karen Schmidt for handling that, and for Mayor Pro Tem Karen Schmidt and Scott Black for agreeing to handle our open house. So we're still having the mayor's open house, but we'll have Mayor Pro Tem and Alderman Scott Black there to handle questions, concerns, et cetera. So Alderman women, any parting shots here? You had to do it. You millennials. Okay, sorry, Alderman Black.
Thank you. I just wanted to kind of circle back to an email I had sent earlier this week about a council group picture. I think that's important because, you know, it puts a community focus, not just all, single aldermen, but as an entire Bloomington, city of Bloomington. So now that we have our new addition to our team here, I would be curious to know, you know, how we can get some next steps going, maybe wait till the summertime and take a nice picture in front of the fountain?
Or we could even just, what do you say, Alderman, in front of the fountain? Wow.
We're doing it. It's not amateur hour. A selfie.
I think a good springtime picture, but we have in the other room a picture that, where we take individual pictures of each elected official and have that in the plaque, but I would suggest maybe a spring sprouts and around that fountain, that'd be a beautiful spot for a group picture.
Yeah, right. Whenever it's springtime. I like it because...
We're about this thing we shall overcome.
Right, something like that. Whenever I look at older pictures of councils and the county board, they always had a group shot together, I think it'd be nice if we did that as well.
Yeah, awesome. Alderman Schmidt, excuse me, Sterns.
Just really quick, thank you for moving forward on the Quinn, Elmo Quinn Day, which I think is March 10th. Is that correct?
I believe that's, I believe that's correct. I'll check with Katie in the morning.
So you will not be here for that either, unfortunately, but I will be. And I believe we have a nice proclamation. Have you contacted him?
I'm assuming, I'll talk to Katie in the morning.
Yeah, yeah. But looking forward to that. And Bobby's done a nice job on the proclamation, and I want to add a little bit, as just as a lifelong resident, somebody who grew up with, you know, him, his wife, et cetera. So looking good, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Shall I move?
Move. Gosh, that was very good. Okay, moved by Alderman Schmidt, and second, I think, by Alderman Millawaway. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, can stay.